Now, we turn to our regularly scheduled program. And we will reopen open session for the Lompoc City Council for today, October 4th, 2022. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Vega.
Here.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Present.
Councilmember Cordova.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Jeremy Ball.
Present.
Mayor Janelle Osborne.
Here.
Do we have any reportable action from closed session, Mr. Malave?
Mayor, the City Council met in closed session to discuss the two items on the agenda, one labor negotiations item and one existing litigation item. Council discussed both those items and gave direction to staff, but there was no reportable action taken.
Thank you. All right. We have Chaplain Keith McClellan for our invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me. Almighty God, Creator and Sustainer of life, we invite your presence, wisdom and guidance in this meeting and in all council deliberations. I pray your blessing on each and every participant in tonight's meeting, our council members, our city staff and members of our community. Tonight, we are especially thankful for the men and women from both government and volunteer agencies who provide education that can prevent and protect individuals and communities from the impact of horrific fires. Bless all those in our community who follow their excellent advice. We also give thanks for all those involved in the provision of public power. May we continue to acknowledge and support their contributions and in doing so, acknowledge that we are all interdependent and better together. We pray tonight not only for wisdom on how to best address our own local concerns, but we pray for individual wisdom on how to address the concerns of those who have been devastated by Hurricane Ian. We pray that you heal broken hearts, restore and comfort the faint and those who are grieving so much loss. Give protection for those who have responded from around the country, including those from the county of Santa Barbara, who have voluntarily placed themselves in harm's way to assist others. Bless those who have given both time and resources to aid others in the recovery from this devastation. May we do for others what we would hope others would do for and with us in our time of need. Heavenly Father, history and experience has shown us that it is not only important to do the right things, but to do the right things the right way. Give each council member and all who may speak tonight the will and wisdom to do both. May they find wisdom, perspective and inspiration in each other's words and opinions. Remind us that we are all stewards of your creation. Give us hearts and minds to lean not only on our understanding, but in all things acknowledge your authority over all things great and small. And finally, all-knowing God, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping build a community worthy of your purpose. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Come on up. So we have two proclamations this evening, and the first will be for National Fire Prevention Week. Whereas the City of Lompoc is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our community, fire is a serious public safety concern for both locally and nationally and homes where people are at greatest risk from fire. Whereas the National Fire Protection Association has announced "Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape" as the theme for Fire Prevention Week, October 9th through the 15th, reinforcing the critical importance of developing a home escape plan with all members of the households and practicing it regularly. And whereas according to NFPA data, home, the place where people feel safest from fire, is actually where they are at greatest risk, with three quarters or 74% of all US fire deaths occurring in homes. When a home fire does occur, it's more likely to be serious. People are more likely to die in a home fire today than they were in 1980. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of loss of life in ported home fires in half, and all smoke alarms should be replaced at least once every 10 years. And whereas the age of smoke alarms can be determined by the date of its manufacture, which is marked on the back of the smoke alarm. And whereas the City of Lompoc and our firefighters are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas the residents of our community are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the Fire Prevention Week 2022 theme, "Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape", promotes potentially lifesaving messages that can mean the difference between life and death in a fire. Developing a home escape plan with all members of the household and practicing it regularly ensures that everyone knows what to do when the smoke alarm sounds and uses that time wisely. Therefore, I, Janelle Osborne, Mayor for the City of Lompoc, California, do hereby proclaim October 9th through the 15th of 2022 as Fire Prevention Week throughout this city. I urge all the citizens of our community to know the age of their smoke alarms in their homes and replace them if they are more than 10 years old. Thank you for the work you do. Thank the entire department for the work they do. Here is the proclamation, and you're welcome to say a few words if you'd like.
On behalf of interim Fire Chief Scott Nunes, I'm Kevin Shea, acting battalion chief. And on also behalf of the rest of the Fire Department, thank you for this and check those smoke detectors. Any questions, give us a call. We're happy to come help out. Thank you.
Do I have anybody here from the Power Department? If not, they're probably all out trying to make sure our power is still on. And that's the beauty of Recognizing Public Power Week. We are very unique in that we are our own public utility. We are not PG&E. We are the City of Lompoc's own power. So, for Public Power Week, we, the citizens of the City of Lompoc, place a high value on local choice over community services and therefore have chosen to operate a community-owned, not-for-profit electric. And as utility customers and owners of our electric utility have a direct say in the utility operations and policies. And whereas the City of Lompoc's Electric Division provides our homes, businesses, schools and social service, as well as local government agencies, with reliable, efficient and safe electricity, employing sound business practices designed to ensure the best possible service at not-for-profit rates. And whereas the City of Lompoc's Electric Division is a valuable community asset that contributes to the well-being of local citizens through energy efficiency, customer service, environmental protection, economic development and safety awareness. And whereas the City of Lompoc's Electric Division is a dependable and trustworthy institution whose local operation provides many consumer protections and continues to make our community a better place to live and work and contributes to protecting the global environment. And whereas the City of Lompoc Electric Division will continue to work to bring low-cost, safe, reliable electricity to community homes and businesses, just as it has since 1923, the year when the utility was created, to serve all citizens of the City of Lompoc. Therefore, I, Janelle Osborne, Mayor for the City of Lompoc, California, do hereby proclaim October 2nd through the 8th of 2022 as Public Power Week and that our community join hands with more than 2,000 other public power systems in the United States in its celebration of public power, which puts our residents, businesses and the community before profits. So again, big round of applause to those guys. And my city manager is here to accept on their behalf and say a few words.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you, guys. I knew this was coming up, so I have some videos I was going to play during the city manager report. So I'll play that then and thank you, guys. I appreciate this.
All right. Well, look what's next on the agenda. It's the city manager report. So we'll roll right into that, Dean, however you'd like to deliver it.
Perfect timing. Yeah, I always like to showcase our employees when any chance I get. So I'll kick it off with this, since it's flown right into this. This video, we have a couple of them here that are showcasing our electric lineman and conservation. This was put together by Samantha Scroggins and Brian Padilla. Sorry, I couldn't read it. I want to thank them for putting this together, and this is, you know, to celebrate the Public Power Week. So I'll go ahead and play.
The City of Lompoc is proud to be your electric provider. We offer low-cost and reliable energy services. And whether it's rebates, programs or new electric needs, we're here to help you. Lompoc Electric is committed to investing in its community. We try to help optimize energy use, help with energy efficiency projects, and really just try to keep the lights on and the rates low. We're a community-owned electric utility, and we're here to partner with our community to help you keep the lights on.
I grew up here. I was raised here. And now I have family, and I get to raise them here. I mean, to be here, to work for your community is pretty cool. You know, I never thought I'd be doing that. But now I'm thinking about it, it's a good time and honestly, I'm proud of it. You know, I'm able to, pretty much, I'm on call. You know, I'm able to take care of whoever calls in and is like, hey, my power's out. And once I've, you know, closed that switch in and you see the smile on their face, and you know, that's pretty much the rewarding thing about it, you know, is seeing that, seeing those lights come on for the community is definitely a blessing. It's definitely a benefit for the city, you know, to have their own power. Meaning benefit is we're a great group of guys to where when something happens, most of the guys are from the community, and we get together and we come in and we make sure the power's on to where if it's something else, usually it takes a lot longer for other departments or outside sources because that we're able to get that call and respond a lot quicker than most other places.
I wanted to end up in electric because I wanted to be something that was bigger, more important. And so I knew what my outcome was. And so I ended up getting an opportunity to come over, and I took it. It's hard work, but in the end, it's rewarding. It's good to be part of something bigger, really important to, you know, the customers that we serve. And it's important to them and it's important to me. My kids are going to grow up here, and I knew I wanted to be part of that, to make this a better place for, not just for me, but my kids and future generations. The good thing about working for the city here and living here is you're part of the community. You take pride in what you do. You're not working somewhere else that you're not really a part of. You come out here, we're around town. You know that you built that or you're part of that. So you take pride, you take care. You know, it's the quality work that you do. And knowing that my kids are going to grow up here, you know, makes you try harder to, you know, do a better job, to make sure things are done right. And to serve the citizens here, it's great.
Lompoc's unique because they have their own electrical utility, which is kind of rare within cities. There's still some out there. But as far as customer service goes, you don't get better customer service. The response times are way quicker. Like I said, we're on top of it. We know the system. We take pride in the system. And we're constantly upgrading to make sure everybody has quality service. All the way down to the billing department, taking care of all their customers and making sure all their bills are correct. It's from the engineers all the way up in the electric department. It's just a great team, and we do great work. Over 10 years now, we've won awards every year for most reliable power in this area. And we continue to win awards. We take pride in that, and it's something that we all enjoy doing. We just have a lot of pride. We all live here. This is home. So we take care of our community and our customers. And like I said, they're all like family to us, and we just make sure everybody has reliable service and we can do the best job that we can do.
La ciudad de Lompoc es una utilidad pública que provee energía a su comunidad. Trabaja duro para encontrar programas para que usted ahorre dinero en su vida de luz.
Very good. I also wanted to encourage everybody to go to the library. I know we mentioned it earlier in the library meeting there, that the Grossman Gallery is doing a tiny art showcase. And that was everything that was submitted in September. It'll be displayed during October. And there was like 93. I went and looked at it. It's really cool. It's really neat, and you can see how creative people can be. The last thing I'd like to ask for direction from council. I know we've looked at a lot of the comps. We've looked at police, fire, management, IBW. But one of the ones we never really looked at was the council's compensation. So I'm looking for your direction. If you'd like me to bring this back, I can bring this back at the next meeting. And I'll turn it over to you guys for that direction.
Do we have support for that? I see a head nod.
I support that.
All right. I'll give it a third. So please bring back for discussion.
Thanks, Mayor. I did want to add on one item to the end of the city manager report tonight, and that is the council has asked me to give a report out on a recent settlement of a lawsuit, an environmental lawsuit that the city was involved in. As the council knows, and a lot of the public probably knows, the city's wastewater treatment plant is subject to a permit under the Clean Water Act that regulates the levels of pollutants in the discharges from our wastewater treatment plant. And over the past number of years, the city has noted that in its testing results for the discharges from the wastewater treatment plant, there were certain times when the toxicity limits, the testing results indicated that the toxicity limits exceeded the levels that were allowed by our permit under the Clean Water Act. As the city was required to do over those years, we reported, publicly reported in our reports to the EPA and the Water Board, every single time there was a toxicity exceedance, and the city investigated to try to determine what the source of that toxicity was. Over a number of years, we were not able to determine what the source of this toxicity was that was causing us to have to publicly report these exceedances from our wastewater plant. In 2020, there is a citizens' environmental group called the Environmental Defense Center. They reviewed the city's public reports of our discharge levels and found that there were these toxicity exceedances and decided to file a Clean Water Act lawsuit against the city claiming that we were liable for damages and penalties because of these toxicity exceedances. In the Environmental Defense Center's lawsuit, they claim that the city was liable for over 3,000 discharge violations over the past five years. We litigated that case for two years, since 2020, when it was filed, and the court ultimately found that there were only 86 violations, toxicity exceedance reports that the city reported and over the time period that we were sued over. In the Ninth Circuit, well, I should also say that during the pendency of the lawsuit, we had some experts do some analysis of our exceedances and our public reports of those exceedances. And our expert determined the reason we could not find a source for the toxicity is because the toxicity results in our testing were being caused by a faulty test method. In other words, the test method that we were using to test the discharges from our plant was resulting in false positives. And that when it showed that there was toxicity, we had to report that there was a toxicity exceedance, but that the toxicity, our expert concluded, was being caused by false positive test results. And when our expert used a different method of testing, there were no toxicity results in any of the discharges from our plant. Nevertheless, in the Ninth Circuit, the Ninth Circuit Courts, the fact that we had publicly reported the toxicity exceedances over the last five years, in the Ninth Circuit, that is a binding admission against the city in environmental lawsuits like this. In some other circuits, we would be able to argue that that should not be an admission because we found in our expert analysis that it was testing error. But in the Ninth Circuit Courts, we cannot argue that. And our public reports were binding admissions in court. For that reason, the Environmental Defense Center wanted to take us to trial on penalties. And the maximum amount of penalties that the city could have been liable for in trial is over $5 million. And that would have been paid to the US Treasury for reporting toxicity exceedances that may have been caused by a faulty test. In order to settle the case and eliminate the risk of paying over $5 million in penalties, and also to ensure that anything that the city pays would not just go in penalties to the US Treasury, but might also be used to enhance the environment here in the Lompoc Valley. The city council decided to settle the case with the Environmental Defense Center for $750,000. The Environmental Defense Center has decided to allocate $290,000 of that to environmental programs to enhance the water quality in San Ynez River and San Miguelito Creek around Lompoc. And $490,000 of that, they are requesting from the Department of Justice to be awarded to them as their attorney's fees. The settlement does require approval by the Department of Justice, so the Department of Justice will be reviewing their request for attorney's fees to determine that it is reasonable. And that concludes my report about the report out from the closed session on the settlement. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions for city manager before we move on? Councilmember Ball.
Just real quick, I just wanted to say awesome job to the team that put together those videos. Again, getting the word out and celebrating and having a local pride, especially for our local workers, I think that's tremendous. I'd love to see more of that. We have so many great stories to tell about hardworking people here. So I hope we continue a lot more of that. So good job on that.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, city attorney, thank you for the report. I think it's important that the public understands where their utility payments on the wastewater plant are going. Thank you.
All right, seeing nothing further for the city manager or city attorney, we will move on to consent calendar. We'll open the floor for public comment on consent calendar. If you would like to speak to a consent calendar item, now is your time. You'll have three minutes. If you'd like to call in, the number to call is 805-875-8201. Floor is now open.
Deb Andrews, Lompoc. Number two. The Regional Climate Collaborative Grant Program. I have not read that, but I am assuming it has something to do with the climate change we're hearing about in the news. That's a hoax. I encourage you to not participate in this climate hoax.
Did we receive any written comments for consent calendar?
No, ma'am, nothing.
All right. While we wait to see if anyone is calling in, I will read the consent calendar process. All items listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the council vote. Any items withdrawn from the consent calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communications near the end of the meeting. Seeing no one call in and no one else rise, we will close public comment on consent ballot and bring it back to council for questions or a motion. Councilmember Cordova.
Move to accept.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Cordova and a second by Councilmember Vega. Any questions? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. We have no staff presentations, so we'll bring it back to general oral communications regarding city matters. If you would like to speak to a city issue not currently on the agenda, now is your time to do so. You have three minutes. The number to call is 805-875-8201.
Deb Andrews, Lompoc. The green grass is lovely on the approach to City Hall. There's soap in the restrooms at Beatty Park. Thank you. However, the water fountain and spigot by the reserved picnic area near the restrooms both do not work. Groups are discouraged from planning gatherings if water is not available by that picnic area. There's a pattern of water fountains not working in City Hall, city streets and in the parks. Is water for citizens being restricted? According to the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, each cannabis plant uses six gallons of water per day. I'm not aware that is causing any problems. Please fix all the drinking fountains and water spigots in Lompoc. Our homeless neighbors are in need of access to water. Consider providing a cannabis ration of water to each homeless person per day, six gallons, to drink, shower and for the toilet. It looked like solar charging stations in the power presentation. Those are costly. I think we could provide stainless steel facilities, shower, toilet, sink, drinking fountains for our homeless. They could be pressure washed throughout the day. Willing homeless people could maintain them. You could have some kind of bleach mixture in the pressure washer. It would, I don't think it would be that costly. And we certainly spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on many things for the city. And I think that our homeless residents should factor in the equation.
Seeing no one else rise and no one phone in, we'll close oral communications. Did we have any written communications on any other matters, Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am. We received an email from Mr. Ron Fink regarding cannabis. And it was delivered to council and staff. It is on the website. It is a really long document, so I did not make copies for outside in the lobby, but it is available on the website.
Thank you. All right. Our final oral communication of the evening is two minutes. So if there's a topic that you have still not had a chance to cover that is city-related and you want two more minutes, the floor is now yours. You may call in at 805-875-8201. While we wait to see if anyone calls due to a time delay, we'll start with some announcements just to simplify later in the evening. But for many of you, you've received a sample ballot for the upcoming elections. There have been questions about why some candidates aren't on your ballot. We have moved to a district system. So those of you that live in District 2 or 3 will have a candidacy for mayor and a candidacy for the individual running for the council position. If you're in District 1 or 4, you will only have the mayoral candidate on your ballot. Each household will receive a sample ballot for each registered voter at that address because on the back of that sample ballot is your information about your register to vote, where your voting location is. And so the sample ballot inside reflects the ballot that you will get based on the district you live in. So each one is different based on that district. And some districts have a council position open and some don't. But all districts will vote in the mayoral run. Seeing no one call in and no one rise for the two-minute communication period, we will close oral communication and bring it back to council. We'll start with Councilmember Starbuck.
I have no reports.
All right. Councilmember Korvadova.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Jeremy Ball.
Well, of course, I have to say something. So just to keep you here for one and a half more minutes. Couple of quick things, all over the scope, or all over the gamut of things here. But a reminder, it's still a few weeks out, but I think October 29th, they're having the local Halloween trick-or-treat walk-around. I was super impressed. It looks like 42 businesses within walking distance are participating. That's quite a few. So I'm very excited about that. And I'll have my young son dressed up in his appropriate outfit for that. Let's see, something I did that I encourage other folks to do. We always forget to go to our own parks on occasion. I'm guilty of that. But I took the wife and the child to Beatty Park on a Saturday and then went the next day for a picnic each day. and then went the next day for a picnic, each day. We just sat in the grass. And that place was packed, absolutely packed, people enjoying the park. Uh, yes, it's really easy to look around and find issues. Things need to be fixed. Better basketball courts, gotta repave that. The bathroom needs fixed. The squirrels are doing something over there. But the folks are coming out to enjoy the upgrades in that park. And I, it was just, uh, I was excited to actually see people there. And it, I had to drive around and around a couple of times to find a parking spot. And that's good news for us. And I'm excited to see some of our other parks um, bring some of those amenities to their neighborhoods as well. Uh, shout out to the electric department. Uh, we saw some really cool videos about the power. Uh, shout out to my, uh, my wife's uh, aunt. Just moved from Detroit, Michigan to a place on South H Street. And happened to move in and her first day was going to be Saturday, the, the Labor Day weekend. And she thought her power would be on on Friday. And so me not trying to use any of my special powers, which I don't really have any, I just did what you're supposed to. And you call the number and dispatch picked up and they were very helpful. And within about 45 minutes, somebody from the city on a Saturday on Labor Day weekend, of course, showed up and had the power working. She was able to turn the fans on. So again, we have our own services here and that's a really big blessing to our community. So shout out to that. Last one, I, I just want to say thank you to the police department for something very specific. I live on Walnut between L and M. It's a, it's not the, it's not necessarily the, the funnest neighborhood on occasion. It can be downright scary on occasion. Uh, but I happened to hear a commotion outside and I didn't see the altercation, but it was pretty evident quickly afterward that it was some sort of domestic dispute in the alley. So I filmed whatever I could and I called 911 like anyone should when you see something. And uh, our police officers showed up. Our dispatch was amazing. She was super helpful, super thoughtful. Made sure I got all the information correct. Police officer, I believe his name was Officer Miller, showed up. Incredibly professional, very thoughtful. I was concerned about this woman, you know, who knows what's going on. Uh, they took all of my information, made sure that I, asked all the appropriate questions and provided a great level of service. So I experienced that firsthand. And I just wanted to give them a shout out. I know there is so many issues in our community. We don't have enough police officers. We don't have enough public safety to tackle everything tomorrow or immediate. But they are doing the best they can and I just appreciate that service that I received. And I want to continue to, to let people know, look, we're doing the best that we can. They're working really hard. If you see something, please say something. Make sure you report it. Uh, but again, shout out to them for their excellent service and for being so professional. I really appreciate that. That's all I got.
Thank you. Councilmember Vega?
I'm not going to talk that long, but I'm, I do have a question. People have asked, uh, is there a carnival in town?
Do you know anything about it? Do you want to share?
No, I don't. I always thought, it was a question to see if we could provide information. I know that you probably know a little bit about it.
I, I've seen a few things. Yeah, I've seen a few things on social media.
Can you kind of fill us in there? And I have nothing else to report. Thank you.
All right. Um, I believe our community development director can share with us the carnival that's here. I think it's an outside group that does carnivals across the state. Kristi?
Yes. So we have a fall carnival. It is just a, a park rental, but we have signs all over the place, sixth through the ninth, Fall Carnival at Ryan Park.
Awesome. Thank you for that.
And I believe wristbands, pre-sale wristbands or something like that are available at the Anderson Rec Center if anyone's interested.
Perfect. Thank you for that. No other things to report?
Oh, it's not free, Kristi?
No.
Sorry. It's a private group, so thank you so much.
Yeah, it's a private group. It's, it's, unfortunately, it's not free. Um, so I did um, attend Northern California Power Agency's Annual Conference. We are founding members of that, which is one of the reasons our power is as inexpensive as it is. We are partners with 14 other communities in owning our own power production. We have several hydroelectric dam facilities, a uh, natural gas energy facility, and a geothermal facility in Northern California that we are part owners in as the city of Lompoc, which is another reason our electrical services are so reasonable and we're a nonprofit. Um, at that conference, um, we had a change in leadership. I have now been voted in as the vice chair for the entire organization of the NCPA. And not only represent myself and our community at that, but I represent all of the communities as part of that leadership in our trips to Sacramento and to Washington D.C. And I was voted in as chair of the Legislative and Regulatory Commission. So it makes me very proud to be an advocate for our community and fellow public power communities by being a member of this organization and doing that important work. I want to thank Vandenberg Space Force Base for opening up the Hawks Cove and inviting me to the ribbon cutting. It is a one-stop shop for those experiencing domestic violence or um, violence of any nature. Many of the services already existed on base, but they were in different buildings and different locations. They have now housed it um, in a single location. It's called the Hawks Cove. And it is amazing. It is very warm, welcoming, and safe. And all the service providers to assist our military personnel and their families that might be experiencing violence in any form have the kind of support and security in, in a, a, a single location. It is beautiful. I want to thank all the local agencies and businesses that supported the upgrade. It's, it's beautiful paint. It's warm, it's cozy. And it's just really important to see that partnership and some of our local agencies are part of that team. We also had Vandenberg Space Force Base's leadership tour our community last week. So I want to thank all of the staff at all the different departments and all the different locations. Be supportive of that. Go around. It was an entire afternoon. Our city manager and his team uh, took their leadership around and showed them our wastewater, our water treatment facility, some of our parks, including Beatty, to really help them understand how we as a community can support the base and its mission and their families. And also listen to them to hear what their needs are. So thank you for organizing that and taking um, important time out of your days to build on that relationship. Um, I also attended the Champions Institute first two modules, module one and two, earlier this year. I was able to put an application in and be one of only 14 cohorts in this year's Champion Institute, which is a national program for complete streets. We had recently passed our streets pedestrian and bicycle master plan, as well as our multimodal plan for H and Ocean. And this is one more opportunity that I have been um, able to take advantage of, to learn more, open more doors to funding and partnerships and lessons learned for other communities that have implemented change in their community to have a more walkable, safer community for pedestrians, cyclists, and even motorists by improving our community. So as I learn things from this um, year-long process, I will bring it back and share it with staff and bring forward ideas and concepts to the council. But that has begun and has been really interesting so far. We have lots of great things going on in this community. Earlier this evening, we met with the library commission in a joint committee meeting. And to hear all of the things that our city library is doing. And if you look at this ca, uh, October calendar that's attached to Agenda uh, as part of the online packet, you will see most of it is at the library. Most of it is free or very low, low cost. So first, a shout out to our library and our library staff for providing another safe, secure, supportive educational environment to our community. And thank you for all the hard work. So there are lots of things to do and a lot of them are free. Um, you just have to um, look for them and ask, and we are happy to share that with you. We have um, a lot of fun things coming up in our community that the city is a part of putting on. We have the Aquatic Center doing Dunkin' for Punksins on October 23rd at the Aquatic Center. You can pre-register, register for that at um, the Anderson Rec Center or the pool or online. The city website has a link to that. The Housing Element Workshop, October 13th. We are mandated to update this, but here's your opportunity to provide input. It will be the 13th at 5:00 PM at the Dick DeWes Center. And we look forward to everyone coming out and sharing their concerns as we update something we're mandated to, but also want to reflect what our community needs in that. So please participate. And then the library is offering uh, free classes in what's called Connected California, which is being issued by the state library in support of you identifying low-cost digital products that you can purchase and have in your home, as well as help you navigate being online from your security of your own home. So it's a free program. You can reach out to the library to find out how to access it. And it will help you access how to get a tablet, how to get uh, low-cost digital products so that you can safely access uh, online. And then um, the Christmas Parade. I know it's a little early to talk about it, but it will be the December 2nd. And that application window to participate in is now open. So if you would like to submit your club, organization, a float, or participating in it, you have until November 21st to submit, but that window is now open. And last but not least, there is an art contest. I have to read the details because um, the city conservation department is getting ready to put its annual calendar together. And what they would like is for you, the community, to submit artwork as part of a competition. And there are two questions to ask. What do you do to help conserve water and energy? And how do you help with environmental sustainability in Lompoc along with your artwork? You must be enrolled in a K through 12 school, attend a Lompoc area school. Artwork should be related to the environment sustainability and digital artwork is okay. And use a very heavy hand in bold primary colors and landscape orientation. So this way, not this way, is the way they'd like it since that's the shape of the calendar. You can send your artwork to j underscore Caldera dash Toledo. C L, C A L D E R A hyphenated T O L E D O at ci.lompoc.ca.us or bring it into City Hall. And you have up until October 31st to do so. So really exciting opportunities. Please participate in your community. Your input makes us better at doing our job. So please come out and participate in any way you can. Thank you all for being here. We will adjourn the Lompoc City Council to the next regular meeting at 6:30 PM on October 18th, 2022.